Is this the one you sent out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to call the Village Council Regular Meeting, I'm sorry, Village Council Work Session Meeting to order September 27th, 2018, 9:00 AM. First, a call to order. Do we determine?
We do have a quorum.
We do have a quorum, okay. First up is adoption of the agenda.
Just as an appointment, it is listed as a Village Council Regular Meeting.
Yes.
Good catch. We'll change that. We just haven't updated our templates. We need to do a separate template for it.
I wasn't reading. I was actually reading, I thought, from the 9/11 meeting and stuff, so yeah, so if you could change that.
I mentioned the same thing, just to, with public comment, which I think is true, we didn't have one this month, sort of thing.
All right.
And the other Pledge of Allegiance is not typically on here, but not in there.
But we can still keep it.
Doesn't hurt to do it again.
So first up, we have adoption of the agenda. Any changes, additions, removals? From anyone?
It's an office.
I would like to read the Treasury Report. I have some questions about that. And then I have a question about clarity, really. You know, for information only, you didn't want us to act on anything?
No, no, I just wanted to be sure.
For what? It says for information only, those, that's, I just wanted to be sure that they need us to call or anything, otherwise I would have moved it to the consent agenda or something, but they don't.
So now you want to remove the Treasury Report and consent agenda? Do you want to put it for discussion or just?
Yeah, just, I have questions.
Move it to discussion.
Yeah.
So that'd be unfinished business?
So are we doing the, wherever you want to move it?
Are we doing, sorry, are we doing the consent agenda now or the regular agenda?
Well, yeah, usually when we get to consent agenda, then we can ask if we want to remove anything or talk about it.
That's okay, you go ahead. If you're on there, yeah, just go ahead.
The reality is, the consent agenda, even though we call it that, is not a separate agenda, and so when you go to adopt the agenda, you're adopting everything, including the consent agenda, so by doing it afterwards, we've left it out of the adoption of the agenda in general. So technically, you really should do the consent agenda.
Okay, so we're just going to move it to D, unfinished business, D?
D, unfinished?
Yeah, because we've already talked about it. It's just a matter of adopting it.
Okay.
The Treasury Report?
Yeah.
You want it as G? Uh, sorry?
I can move it to C, too.
D. To D? Okay.
Yeah, unfinished D.
I have another website proposal.
Anything else?
I'm sorry, just want to make sure I checked my notes. Nope, that's, um, yeah, maybe, you know what, I'll leave it for now. I'm not really sure. We'll leave it for now. That's it for me.
Okay. I want to take off the meeting minutes from the consent. I'm not ready to cut out.
5:31?
Yep.
So all we're doing is continuing?
For discussion or just?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. Do you have any?
No.
Okay. And I don't see anything that I need to change or add or anything, so, okay, so I need to motion to adopt?
So we're not adding anything?
Oh, what are we supposed to add?
No, I just want to make sure, because I've seen a lot of emails going around, that we're trying to slip stuff in, so I just wanted to confirm that nobody's trying to slip anything in.
Oh, okay, yeah, no.
No, okay, good.
We don't do that. All right, so.
Can I clarify something?
Yeah.
On the table minutes, do you want to move those to October?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, table them to October, give us some more time at this point.
I actually, I did see that there was something floating around about a closed session. I won't even vote on that motion, whether it gets added or not, but because it was added before the 48-hour mark, I do think that you should officially add it. I mean, I think it's fun that it's here, but, um...
Okay, so it's on the agenda now?
It wasn't on the agenda 48 hours.
It wasn't on the agenda 48 hours, but legal determined that we needed to add it?
Right, because deadlines, right. Instead of calling a special meeting, I thought it was most appropriate just to add it to the schedule.
Makes sense, and it's closed session anyway, so I don't need a special meeting for it.
Someone would just want to go ahead and do that. That'd make the procedure a lot better for them.
So I'd like to add, call for, whoa, I'm sorry, move into closed session at the end after council comments, move into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143, DES 318.11A3, Attorney Client Privilege, R.E. Scoot versus Village of Marvin, ETA AL 18, CBS 1853, so.
And I'm going to move to separate that motion, just because I would prefer not to vote on it, and keep that separate from the adoption of the agenda. That's a motion to separate adoption of the agenda from the addition of that to the agenda.
But we're adding it to the agenda.
Do you see what I mean?
No.
So I'm asking you, the council, who, tell me if I'm wrong, we get to adopt the agenda, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And now you are adding the closed session, right? And I have said, made a commitment to myself, if no one else, that I will not put a vote to anything that has that issue on it. So I would like to separate the adoption of the agenda from the addition.
Okay, so what we do, we have to basically make a motion to add what I just said, and then you will recuse yourself, and you guys will vote, just on that, adding.
So are we adopting the agenda first and then adding there?
No, you have to do this first.
No, you're going to add the closed session.
Add this first.
Motion to add the closed session.
Do you want to attend the closed session?
No.
I was going to ask that she recues herself, but it sounds like voluntarily she wants to do that anyway.
All right, okay, so we need, we need, we need a motion to approve what I just added as the closed session. Further discussion?
So by ex- accusing her, then her non-vote doesn't count as a vote?
Correct, she's recused herself and voted.
So further discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Nay's? Anybody else recuse themselves, so motion passes. Now we need a motion to vote on the agenda, adoption of the agenda as revised.
Motion to move.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
As long as the bar's set, I have a stand.
Yeah.
Yes, and I'll put it on the record that you recused your front from that.
All right, next up is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And next up, we have public comments. We have a few people, I think, are going to be speaking.
Yes.
Just a reminder, state your name, address, and you have three minutes' time to talk about whatever you'd like to talk about.
Are you going to tape them or you want me to do that?
What's that?
You're going to tape them or you want me to do that?
If you could do the timer, you can do the timer, that'd be great, so we'll keep it at three minutes.
One second.
Okay. First up, I have Lissy?
One second.
Hold on one second.
Okay.
Okay, Lissy McLeod.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. My name is Lissy McLeod. I live at 3525 Banion Way on Providence Road Estates. I would like to read something that you all agreed to when you were elected to office, and that is the council's mission statement. We will strive to build a strong relationship with all our citizens, and always remember that the role of government is to serve the people. We will be open and transparent at all times. Next bullet. We will cultivate our relationship with our constituency by embracing our core values, respect, integrity, tolerance, and commitment to excellence. With these core values in mind, we envision a government that is respectful to all citizens. We envision a government that recognizes that the integrity of its reputation is paramount, that is tolerant but will not tolerate disrespect or dishonor actions. That is something that you all agreed to when you were voting into office. In the last two meetings, we're all present, and the one that was canceled due to the lack of quorum, and incidentally, those absences have not been explained. I submit that all three of the statements of the mission have been blatantly violated by the mayor and two of the council members. If the Marvin Town Council truly wants to regain the respect of the constituency, then Mayor, Councilwoman Vanderburg, and Councilman Dispensieri, I suggest that you reread the mission statement and recommit yourselves to it, please. Proverbs 27:17 states, "As iron sharpens iron, so one man sharpens another." I believe that the personality conflicts have blurred your vision, so I ask you to inhale and learn to listen and work with each other. That is what we, as voters, are hoping would happen. You all have gifts that God has given you, and you all have talents, and I do ask that you would have ears to hear one another. We all have things that we might not agree with, but you still have a mission to listen, not my word, the words of the mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Lissy. Next up, Rob, is it Glebel?
Rob Glebel, I live at 3616 Sandalwood Lane.
One second, one second, reset the timer.
I need my four seconds back. Are you ready? Okay, first off, I'd just like to say that I think that the actions of the council over the last six months have been nothing short of outrageous. The lack of transparency that this council is presenting to the voters should be an embarrassment to everybody associated with the council. It's been very clear in my correspondence to my neighbors, my friends, and my fellow constituents in Waxahaw and Marvin where I stand. I want to be very clear at this meeting. Mr. Mayor, I don't care if you vote or not. That point is irrelevant to me. What I do care about is five people making that decision on behalf of 4,000 or 5,000 residents in the Village of Marvin. And so my issue is, if you really cared about that issue, council and mayor, you would demand that that question be put on the ballot, you would demand that a referendum be raised, and then you would spend your time not bailing out of meetings 90 minutes before the meetings start, you would spend your time campaigning for the reasons why citizens should support that message and that element of a ballot. So I would urge you to take that approach rather than the non-transparent approach that you're taking right now. I look forward to that democratic process working, and however this thing works itself out, there will be a process, and I just believe that the process should be the process, so follow the rules. You all signed up for a job, a thankless job, in spite of that enormous salary I teased you guys about. You've signed up for a job under a set of rules, and you should follow those rules. Lastly, as a side note, I think that anything that is adjusted on an agenda should be noted as a revision to the agenda, no matter how minor. That allows those of us who aren't in the inner circle of deciding that agenda to be able to see what's changed. So just a little note in the margin that says change from the last, a little C, something that would identify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Paul McDevitt, and I believe he said that he was not going to, because we're not going to take a vote on the...
Yeah, he left.
He did leave, so mark that for the note, so he doesn't have, I told him to come back, and he was welcome to do his comments today, but I said we're going to actually do this in...
So we can just mark through him?
Yep. All right. Next up, we have recognizing staff achievements.
Yeah. Our clerk actually has obtained her North Carolina Certified Municipal Clerk certification. It's a pretty big achievement for her. It takes a lot of time to do so, so I just wanted to present the plaque to her and recognize her for her achievements. Don't worry.
Do you want to get a picture?
Thank you.
No, we don't need a picture.
No, I didn't want to do that. Not for the record? She didn't even want to do this? Okay. Congratulations, by the way. Next up, we have Administrator's Report. Let's see, so I'm going to...
I've actually put a lot of different memos inside of the agenda packet for the road resurfacing update. Pretty much says, we've had some resurfacing issues noted with our contractor. We're working through those issues with our engineer and trying to get those resolved. So I apologize for the delay in time that it's taken to figure that out, but we are aware of these issues and hope we will have our dislocations here soon. Village Hall update actually passed out a new ADA report. There were just some things on there that I wanted to get added for clarity. If anybody has any questions, you can ask.
Or maybe I should ask, is this one different than the one I received?
Yes. If you want to send me your email or send me an email with questions, that's fine, I can answer now.
That's okay.
Basically, what I'm asking from here moving forward is provided in that memo that I'd sent you in the agenda packet. I just need clarity as to what you want next steps to be. In order for us to really analyze the two different options that we're looking at, I need to get some solid prices for what it's going to cost to do some of this outfit on the proposal down here. I can't really do an RFP yet because we would have to hire an architect to back it out. So if y'all are okay with me just getting some general contractor estimates, it shouldn't cost a village any money to do so, then we can analyze costs and figure out what goes on.
And that's based on the two reports, engineering and ADA? Okay.
Okay, so, sorry, I'm just going to shift and ask a bunch of questions, because I thought we were just kind of quickly moving by, but given that it's on the table for discussion in terms of where to ask, that's actually part of the things I wanted to talk about. I wasn't sure where we were going next. So I think you answered the mayor and said that it would be based on those two reports, the ADA report and which other one?
The structural analysis, the structural engineering report.
Okay. And so that sort of forces my head a little bit. The ADA report does do a little bit of the external consideration, but not everything, right? And it seemed to kind of lay that out in the beginning, that that's more or less what the focus was on. And so you're asking whether or not to get a, just a general estimate based on just those things outlined in the report.
Correct.
So my only concern there is that we're going to wholly underestimate, you know, some major costs in terms of upgrading for commercial standards. Again, I'm not sure, I'm not an engineer, but I think I mentioned to all of you that the Marvin Ebert House project was mine once upon a time, a long time ago, and the reinforcement of a lot of the, like, the underpinnings in the wood, the structural framing, a lot of that was the most, some of the most expensive work. And I, tell me if I'm wrong, is that in the original?
It's in the structural.
The structural report?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be included. Maybe I just need to go over that one, because I think that one may have been put out on the, maybe my first meeting, I can't remember.
I think so, I can get you a copy of it.
Okay.
And if you want to sit down with me and we'll go over questions that you might have.
Sure.
Really, we're not making any decisions as far as which option. What I want to do is get general costs of how much this is going to be, and obviously we know we're going to have to add some contingency in there for certain things. And I had mentioned in the report, none of these two reports look at the actual footings, the integrity of the footings, so that's something that we would have to actually do if we chose this option. I just didn't want to go that far if we weren't going to choose this in the long run, because it is going to cost to actually go in and probe some of that and actually do a sampling of it, so that's something we'll just have to work out in our spreadsheet when we figure out. But I can get you a copy of that, and you should sit down with me.
And full disclosure, I did reach out to, Kim and I talked about this, because we met with the Reason family. They actually called us in, and we sat down with them about what their plan was overall. And the first report that came out after they, you know, kind of revisiting that as a town hall and what they would like to see happen, we had a good conversation with them, but a lot of it, as I explained to them, I did reach out to them and say, you know, government moves very slow, we move by committee. He was very interested in what this report, the ADA report required, and then at that point, I did tell him that we were going to be talking about it this morning to, if he wanted to come in and learn about it, but if we can get a copy of this to him, that would be helpful, so he can, so he can review that and take a look at that. And then, because how government works, we work by committee and stuff, we thought, I told him that most likely was we would be directing you, it's not an RFP, but more of a, get our, get a grasp of what it would cost, and we have a couple bids, contractors come in to say, okay, structurally, we need to do this, 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 and this. ADA, we have to do this, and the whole thing. And again, it can be done, it's just we got to make sure we're doing the whole thing. And if we contrast that to, and one of the things the community needs to know, is if we contrast that to building, okay, which is from scratch where we have that down there and stuff. We have a building right here which has been done before when you look at Weddington, so maybe we could reach out to Weddington and see what that process was, so we're not missing anything. They converted a house into a town hall and were able to do it. One of the things that I would argue is, we have a budget, I believe, of under $1 million, if I'm not mistaken, for this whole thing. Their price, where we priced, we had a discussion after we get our hands around, in my discussion with Mr. Reasons, once we get our head around how much construction cost to convert it to a town hall is going to be, then we look, have to look at the, would have to go into closed session, when we, if we decide we're going to move forward, to come back with an offer.
Correct.
That offer has got to be where we're not paying them, him, more, it's a fair offer. And even though we have the cash ready to go, I would suggest that we need to look at appraisals that are like, because that lets the community know we're not overpaying for something, and it's a controlled cost, especially if we know what the conversion cost from a construction plus the cost of what we're going to be able to pay, that goes into closed session. We may not get to the agreement at the end of the day, because he wants more, I know there's a lot of unknowns there because of the roundabout that's going in and how much land that's going to take, and if it's right in, right out, coming off of Marvin Road, if we need to take some more land of his. He seems pretty open to it, very understanding about how the process is going to work, but we would get our head around, how much is it going to cost to convert it, how much are we willing to pay for it, look at what we have in the budget. And then I would argue, down here, we have to remember, 5,000 square foot is what we're looking at building, and if I go back to Wesley Chapel six to eight years ago, when they built, they donated the land for free, they built a 5,000-square-foot town hall, and back six to eight years ago, it cost $1.3 million. All you have to do is go ask them, we got those hard numbers, $1.3 million. So I would say, given the economy we have now, and six to eight years later, costs have risen, if we think we're going to be able to, be able to do that, under $1 million, I, I, I just would question that, knowing what I know about construction, my family grew up in it, I know Robert said that we could, but we have to understand this is commercial, people need to make money, and being able to do it under 1.3 may be a big question, or concern for mine, and we'd have to hold into that number. The other thing, when it comes to that, is who's going to manage that? There's a cost associated with someone managing that whole process. I know you and I talked about when we got into roads, that, okay, we did the roads for Canterfield Creek, they're all excited, now the issue is curbs. Well, who do you go to? Well, guess what? Christina, unfortunately, you're the road department, you know? So, and then storm drains, you brought that issue up to me. We have no budget for storm drains, but we're in the road business, but we have no budget for storm drains, we have no budget for that, so, but you're going to be tasked with, if we do that, or we're going to have to pay an intermediary, whether it's a contractor, to kind of work with someone, but it's going to be someone from the village and then reports to us.
We have to decide before we go into the bid contract type of format.
Right, right, yeah, because I think we were going down that road, I think, when the previous council came. So, again, if we can get our head around, is this for 99% of the time, does that building work for what we need it for? Let's get our, if, that will help us move forward with it, and just get an understanding that if we have these big contentious meetings, we have three venues to consider, because all ADA, in my looking at this report, is asking for 14 spaces for parking, which I think would be very easily accomplished. Should we do more? Probably, but we also want to do some screening and stuff, so let's get our head around, what would it actually cost to get into that building, and understand, and have the community understand is, when we do have the contentious, big 30, 40 people show up, we've got three options, in my view. We've got the church that we can move, easily move to, and have a town hall meeting if it's contentious. This could easily hold, with what I saw over inside over at the Reasons property, could easily hold a meeting like this, which is, this is actually fairly large for a, especially for a work session meeting, let alone a thing, but the other option is Firethorn, we could easily have, enter in a contract with them to allow space, and I know they, they do that fairly reasonable. And then the third option would be the high school, where we reach out to them, and we have three options, when we know it's going to be, and we know there will be future contentious meetings where people are going to want to show up and stuff, but 99% of the time, if you go over to the town hall and how we make it work, and I have met with ADA and went through a whole class with them, and the person who runs it here in the Union County, she's a stickler, she's very pro-ADA, which I get, and every, everything, every, every part of what that building is will be looked at, and that's why I think it's important to address all the concerns that they have, and if they're, are we missing anything? But reaching out to the Weddington, since they went through that process, I think is a good idea, so.
A few notes that I want to add, just if you don't mind, is, if I'm not mistaken, I think Weddington's actually on a concrete slab. Does anybody know? I think it is.
No idea.
So they aren't going to have a lot of the structural outfit costs that we would encompass with, with over here, so that's one comparison that we really need to keep into consideration with any project, whether it's, you know, upfitting this Reasons property or doing this construction, we're going to have to have some contingency, there's going to be overruns, I'm assuming.
Sure.
So either way we look at it, we're going to have to account for that.
And the other issue, and I don't know if this came up in structural or not, but we got to recognize that that's on septic and well.
Correct.
And that typically, we need to make sure that, from a commercial standpoint, how many people can be at that location at one time and stuff. I know for homes, so many bedrooms, that, that determines how big the septic system is and stuff, but as we're hearing the noise from some of the other landowners and what they want to do, there's potentially where we may be tapping into sewer lines up at that area and may be able to do something there with DOT coming in with the roundabout and hopefully getting it all together, but I think they're still on well, if I'm not mistaken.
They are.
Okay.
I have a concern that's sort of separate but sort of related, because I see this listed under admin update, which I think is fine for an update, but it, the mayor already has mentioned many things that I would love to be able to talk about and address, but, you know, I'm trying my best to stay reserved, given that it does say admin update, so, and it only says village hall update. So I guess what I would like to be sure that happens, if we're truly making sure that the public can understand what's being discussed and how things are progressing, that that really should be an item on its own, and so we can fully discuss some of the reports that we're getting and some of the options. So to that point, I'll make that first. The second thing is, just so that I understand, Mayor, you mentioned that you were meeting, or that you had met with Mr. Reasons, are you continuing to do that?
No.
Or is that just, just, again, I don't know.
No, he reached out to us, and Kim and I went and met with him and his wife probably, was it a month ago or so?
Something like that.
Two months ago. And they, they were actually reaching out, they circled back, because what happened when the meeting, planning board meeting, it was Mr. Reasons that raised the, he said that this, at first, when we initially reached out to them, they weren't interested in having that as a town hall. They had it on the market a while, and then they came back to us, and we agreed to sit down with them and just see, hear them out and see what they wanted to do. So as we were going through this process, and, you know, a lot of this stuff gets disclosed on the website, and, you know, we're, we're looking, and people have to understand, and maybe they don't first glance, but we're looking at converting this to a commercial, so anything we're saying about it may be information that the public is getting, is that, does this mean this house is not livable, you know? So it's just something that we need to address as converting it, and that's what we're doing. We ended up talking to him, and what I did is reach out to him just a couple days ago to let him know that the process, because he was, I know, concerned about where everything was at, and I just assured him that we are going through a process of determining if it can even be converted, and then at that time, we have to move forward with asking to get some bids. And that's all, we're kind of, based on the two reports we have, I think we can at least get an idea of what, what the... we have, I think we can at least get an idea of what, what the cost could potentially be, knowing that there could be overruns.
Right. And I'll just say this for the record, in case anyone's listening, is, if anybody looks at these reports, this is a structural analysis from converting from residential to municipal, commercial, assembly use. So in no way, shape, or form should anybody assume that these mean they would have to do those same things if they were to purchase that house for residential purposes. So, just wanna make that known, in case anybody's listening out there today. One of the things that we could generate a cost savings for, if Reasons has chose over the construction down here, is I would highly advise that we hire a construction at-risk manager, which can help manage the whole project in and of itself, from scratch. Whereas that probably wouldn't be needed in an outfit.
Right.
So I don't know how much those are going for nowadays. I think it's usually dependent on percentage of the total cost project.
Yep.
And I'm not sure if that's something that was put into the, it was
We covered all of them.
We did, okay.
Just, okay.
Just, okay.
They knew that, and this council had not done anything like that.
But there, there is associated cost with that, which is what I'm saying, is like, we can't rely on anyone internally with staff.
Correct.
To kind of run that show.
To manage, I mean, we probably could, but I wouldn't feel 100% comfortable managing a project that size.
The question I would ask is, has anyone ever done it before? And if we're doing it for the first time, why would we risk using staff members, rather than hire professionals who know what they're doing, and, and kind of can work with staff?
But we can, we can make sure that it wasn't included, you're saying that you think it was. If it wasn't, we'll add it in there, and make sure that it is in there explicitly, to really understand that
And when I say included, I mean that, the discussion, like the different options, which are discussed.
Okay, okay.
It wasn't pre-stated.
Wasn't pre-stated.
The next steps, for me, is I'll definitely make sure moving forward, we put it in as a separate item discussion. But I'll just go forward and get in construction estimates, it should be no cost, if y'all are okay with that, just to see what we think that's gonna be. So, and then what I'll do is I'll sit down, and I'll have time by then to really analyze what the architectural report said from this property, and give y'all full options, so that you look at total cost and everything. So when we're making a decision, we're comparing apples to apples.
And on these two reports, are they pretty much bullet pointed, what needs to be converted?
Pretty much, so.
Okay, okay. Cause I, I would say we need to get in there and stuff, and I
And, and we need to keep in mind some of the extra things that are included in these reports, like that probing for the sampling of the footings, if we get to that point. And we'll just have to get a general cost for that, cause we don't wanna do that
Right.
At this point.
Right. That's what I was gonna say, can we find somebody who knows how to do that? And then find out how much it's gonna cost, and just add that on to the cost.
We've got, yeah. And we'll do that in our spreadsheets.
So this cost that you're looking to get would cost nothing? So who are we getting that cost from?
I, I'll just have to put out some type of bid, if, I mean, if people know contractors, we can, not a bid, I'm sorry, cause it's gonna be non-binding.
Okay.
So make sure I'm clarifying that. We can't actually get true amounts until we RFP it, because
Right.
We're gonna have to get an architect to do it. So I really just need general
Estimates.
Estimates, that should be no cost to us.
Right.
And we talked about this, I think, a little bit too. I mean, I think, the last time we went through something like this, we went so far as, well, I, I did, went so far as to get the construction cost manual for North Carolina. You go through all the itemized list, and then you actually get cost, and you estimate that cost, right? Once you have the two reports. And then, you know, you can calculate it practically in-house, but I just don't know how accurate that is. I was just thinking of the word, the joists, not just the fitted footings, but the joists. Cause even though we were not going to be using the upstairs for anything, other than offices, they still needed to reinforce some of the joists. So all that sort of thing, I don't, I haven't seen the reports, all of it, we'll
Well, I mean, the, the structural engineer puts in general cost what he thought it was gonna be, and obviously, he doesn't know for sure. But we can compare, kind of, what he anticipates to what the contractor, or two, or three, considers.
And then, yeah, and all I would ask is, is that whoever comes in to bid, that make sure they have commercial experience with, you know, adhering to what is gonna be needed, because a lot of these guys are residential, you know?
So the next step
So I'm a little confused, cause you're mentioning bid.
Yeah, it's not
Not bid, I'm sorry. It's, it's a quote, basically.
And, yeah, just, just so everyone's clear, the next steps, if Reasons has chosen, after y'all sit down and analyze the cost, we would have to hire an architect to do, to spec out what it is that's needed. Then at that point, we'll do RFP for actual construction. So we won't even get to actual true cost.
Until an architect, yeah.
Right. And so how far did we come in terms of the cost for a new build?
From my understanding, and I haven't had a whole lot of time to go through all that paperwork, from my understanding, it's ready to go, RFP, the architect has got everything spec'd out, where all we've gotta do is RFP it, and then get quotes for that. But I do know that were some concerns or questions with the final design.
Yeah.
So that would have to be fully done, or redone, with the architect, until we can actually send out an RFP for it. So the, the final design, from my understanding, has not been fully blessed, I canceled.
For, right, yes.
So in that case, it's not ready to be let from an RFP standpoint.
Yeah. I know we talked about redesigning the outside, from an architectural standpoint, and re-looking at what it looks like, instead of a barn look. There was some other choices we were in the process of discussing. But internally, I don't know if it's changed much.
And it shouldn't cost too much more for an architect to redo all that stuff, but we, you know, from either standpoint, neither one of them are ready to be, to RFP. This, this one down here, Village Hall, the, the new, the new construction is obviously way more advanced than this would be, because we actually have an architect that has already let, has already spec'd everything out, except for some of the final.
Well, and that, and that note, so I, I do feel like I'm kind of walking this line here, and I share with you, I'll share with the rest of the council, that at this point, I, I don't know which is best. I've always been in favor of keeping, or trying to acquire historical property when we can. By the same token, cause you have a little earlier topic before, I'll tell you that, I think there is an argument to be made, that why move from this location, if you're gonna move to another location, spend the money, and still have to find and rent, or have some kind of an agreement for meetings, yet again, number one. And then number two, I, I heard you mention that many things, I don't wanna debate it, I think I'm the mayor, but let me just say for the record, the other consideration here is, every time that we move to a new location, it's also a staff room, in particular, right? And also for the public, because they're not exactly sure where the meeting's gonna be. Sometimes it's at the last minute, as we're finding out. Sometimes we think people are coming, and they're not, or vice versa. And then, of course, staff too. If we wanna get to the point where we've got presentations up for the public, we wanna make sure that everything is set up. Right now, the staff has to move everything over, from here to there, sometimes at the last minute. We just encountered that today, where there was some word, that there might be a lot, there might be, this meeting might be well-attended. And so staff had to go through the extra step of making sure that that room was available. Then, of course, they were looking forward to seeing, well, do we need the, the equipment? They had a meeting last night, so they're planning on doing it this morning, they're here this morning. All of those issues come with having two different locations. And I think that was one of the major drivers, at least for me, was to see us move to a place where we always hold our, our, our meetings, and it's professional looking, and it accommodates the growth that we've been seeing in the village. So, again, if it worked to me, I'd say do both. But that's, just for the record.
Do both, what do you mean, do both?
Well, I would say, why not do what you can to restore, to acquire whatever historic property you can, if it's feasible? Because we had land acquisition in the budget for at least 10, 12 years now, and yet we haven't acquired anything, because we were provided the land on the other corner. And then in the meantime, also acknowledge that, at least since 2009, we have heard the public say, you know what, to some extent, within budget, that it's time to grow and make sure that we have a more professional settings for meetings. So I just didn't want anyone to think that I've closed off my mind to one thing or the other. But I, I want us to be real about why it is, we would just, you know, go into a situation where, it's a beautiful house, I've been through it, it's gorgeous, I can see it working much like this, if not better. But yet again, you're dealing with a lot of the same challenges. So I just wanted to
Well, I think, that's, some good points there, but I
I agree, I, I agree. I mean, why
Excuse me, I, I, no, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
I, I'm sorry, it's just a meeting for discussion, but I'm happy to hear in public comments and stuff, so.
Okay.
The, I think, good points that you make, that's why we had staff go over there and say, okay, can this even work, before we even go any further? And we looked at the spacing and stuff, and yes, it's gonna cost a little bit of money to add a door, and take their shower, and turn it into a, an area for a bathroom for handicap, and, and access, and 14 spaces, and stuff like that. So when you look at that, versus building another building and stuff, cause I, I quite frankly, look at that corner, if we're able to do it here, take that corner and do very little with it, in a sense that, you know, we talked about a farmer's market, an area where it could be a meeting gathering places on weekends, where they have acoustical, you know, concerts, or something on that corner and stuff, where we're not adding more buildings to it. But as far as growth, I mean, we're almost built out. I mean, the, the biggest decisions that are gonna be made, we got 67 homes being built here, they're adding at the Howard property, you've got a couple other locations that have large lots, and then it becomes this corridor. So 99.9% of the time, this is what, 1700 square feet, 20, 2,000, under 2,000 square feet, and moving into a 4,000 square foot area. And in my mind, looking at it as more of a controlled cost, because we're at 1.3 over there, and putting a building that, we're not even sure what's gonna look right. But we're doing two things at the same time, preserving land, where you're not building on it, and using historical land in, in exchange for putting a town hall in there and stuff. So, good points to be made, and something that obviously we can talk about as we go through this. But to your point, it should be a separate item thing, that I just wanted to make the community know, full disclosure, that Reasons was wanting to know what happened, and all I did was reach out to them and say, here's the process, here's what we're gonna be doing. And that we were gonna be talking about it today. I would probably move, or ask the council to move towards at least getting an idea, getting our head around what the cost would be to convert it, based on the two reports. And then, if it's, you know, if it's a crazy number, then we're, we're back to building over here, because you have to add that to what the value of that home is. And that may, that may exceed what our budget is. And if that's the case, we're back to here.
And again, I just wanna make it clear for anyone that's listening, or anyone here today, is just obtaining these construction costs is non, is, is non-binding. Anyone that submits construction costs would actually have to go through that RFP process and be chosen. So there's no, we're not gonna move forward with any type of construction or anything on the people that are submitting bid, or not bids, but quotes. It's just merely for us to obtain general information about cost.
So then, can I make a suggestion, as long as the council's okay, we'll see, I would prefer to see it one as a separate item, but also, just named, why not call it what it is, which is, you know, consideration of new build versus retrofit, or what outfit, or whatever you wanna phrase it. Just so that people understand where we are in that process, and what's being discussed. Otherwise, people don't really know what's happening.
Okay.
If you have an agreement, I just wanna
Yeah, I have no problem labeling it like that, because again, it's, put it on the agenda, is that, village hall update, I think people would, maybe if they're interested in what's going on with their village, they would get that, but I see your point, specifically, is now we're probably looking at two choices here. Build versus convert.
Do I have a consensus that it's okay to
Yeah, absolutely. Are you okay?
Yep.
Okay, yes. All right, so we're good there. Next up is
Hang on one second, if you don't mind, on the administrators. Are you, are you moving into that?
Preserve trail.
Yeah.
Preserve trail.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were moving on.
No.
So there was, there was a, a general question about
It's still your report, sorry.
Sorry, we are on preserve trail?
Yeah, it's under, still under administrator's report, I was adding, I was letting her know what's next, okay?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your administrator's report.
I thought you were moving on to
No, no, no.
Sorry.
Okay.
Y'all had asked, one of the previous meetings, I'm, I'm sorry, y'all probably can't see this too much, but, this, this was the trail that we had decided, thanks, we were gonna do in the, the last meeting with Toll Brothers, and y'all had asked, there's this sidewalk to nowhere, that's, this is Marvin Road right here, this is Preserve Four, I think is what it's called. There's like a little sidewalk here, and we had had questions about potentially tapping into maybe doing
Yep.
A trail here. And there's a tree preserve in this area. I've contacted Toll Brothers, they're not really interested at this time, so it's something that we're just gonna put on the back burner for now.
So we're down the middle of the street to that pocket, where the pink is, and then
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Which is what we had originally talked about. I just wanted to let you know that this is not really
Now, when do they plan to start on that?
They actually cleared it two weeks ago.
Cleared it where?
Cleared, cleared the entire trail.
Oh, they did? Wow, I'll have to go walk that, cause I didn't
So they were supposed to start construction this week, but with the storm, I think it's
Did you give us any reason why they don't?
They said that the, their legal departments looked at it, and the property owners don't really want it on there, so.
That's in the tree preserve.
Maybe it's something we can ask later. But at this point in time, it's not, not a feasible option for them. I just wanted to make sure it was clear that it was just this we were talking about, and not this, cause this is, this is a done deal.
Right, right.
Yeah, I was confused over that, that's where I was
Yeah, no, I, that's, I just, and I don't even know if there's even, there's a few homes that are sort of, you know, they're specs, or someone's building them. But if we were gonna do it, and then we were able to do it, and they can meander that to, to that sidewalk to nowhere, now is the time to do it. So when you do purchase it, the reality is, there's just not that many people on the trails. And if it's in the woods and stuff, I just thought, why not connect it now, versus, okay?
Yeah, but see, from their standpoint, did you do it now before people buy there, so they know this?
They know it's gonna be there, but, but
Those of us that have been here a while
Yeah, but it's
Remember, harking back, what, 12 years now?
So
When we came on, it was pretty much established in the Greenway Plan, because of the, I mean, our meetings were filled with people at that time, for exactly this reason. Once you, once you approve a plot, and then try to put a Greenway Trail
It's not gonna happen.
It's incredibly difficult.
Right, right.
But if we, if that had been drawn on the plan ahead of time, probably
It's a
But it looks kinda goofy right now. It looks a little goofy right now, as you look at the property go in, it's sidewalk ends, sidewalk ends, and okay, what is the plan? There is none.
Down the street.
And it may go into, on that corner, which is Joe Ogry's property, whatever gets done there, or if that stays the same. And, and, but then you have the roundabouts in there too, and how that works. And maybe a town hall is part of that, access, walkability, or being able to cross the street at some point right there, so.
And Toll Brothers didn't say this, but I can only assume that maybe they had some concerns with being able to sell the property if the trail was in their backyard. But, I mean, that's, that's the only thing I can assume. I just wanted to fill you on that.
Although it is easier to sell it now, that's true, they have to, yeah.
Well, that's why we were at least asking, because it looked like, and I would even be open to help participating with that, cause it looked like it was a little longer, versus going into the cul-de-sac, and people would walk out, versus walk down to the cul-de-sac to get access to the trail and stuff, so. But we tried, and we asked, and the, it's, the good news is, for the community, is that Toll Brothers is taking over the total cost of, of connecting it to the other, I guess, Preserve Three, and Two, of those locations over there.
And I had to admit, I was confused last meeting. I, I thought it was actually the section back here, then all of a sudden, they were refusing.
No, it was just one small section, that is gonna be, you're saying that's clear, so we could walk today, and if I went out back there, and I can get an idea of what it's gonna look like.
And while we're talking about this, actually, Laura just walked into Nancy's office, or maybe she can hear me talking. We've been, Melanie drafted an agreement for us with Toll Brother, Kirk, Toll Brothers. He had emailed us yesterday and asked if ABC Crush and Run was okay for the trail buildup, as opposed to recycled concrete.
Just crush concrete.
Our standards don't say either way, it just says
Crush concrete.
So, e- either way, they both will suffice. I don't have a problem with it, if anybody here doesn't have a problem with Crush and Run.
Is that what the, the land, the current Greenway Plan is concrete?
What, what, what?
Our standards, the standards that Derek worked up had crushed concrete, and a lot of
Their standards.
Yeah.
Is that Tullamore, what they did at Tullamore?
Yes.
Okay.
Recycled concrete is at Tullamore.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Probably.
It's, I don't think
If that's what they're doing, I'm all in.
Okay. They looked at Tullamore, and said they, that they, they're gonna be close to that, but they wanted to use Crush and Run instead. It's just something that will hold together better, they said, won't wash out as much. Yeah, cause I've heard different accounts in Tullamore. Some people said they didn't like it, some people said they have. So I wasn't, I wasn't sure, I'm just not.
Well, maintenance wise, I know, in talking to Derek and those guys, and have to go over there, it's a lot less maintenance with what they converted it to, versus just a trail that, you know, this crushed concrete, once they put that in, it
Stays in place.
It stays in place, it's, you know, can wash out, if, cause that's sort of, there's some floods areas over there. But if you compare it to Amber Meadows, which is, I don't even know where we're at on that, but that's clearly not a walkable trail for But if you compare it to Amber Meadows, which is, I don't even know where we're at on that, but that's clearly not a walkable trail for.
So the Tolemore is what we were using as the, as the.
Yep. Okay. Is that as a standard?
Yes. The substandard on Crush and Run and what's at Tolemore will be slightly different, but the intent is the same.
Okay. Did we have that, have we had that, we had a guy?
Top layer? It'll be the same.
Top layer is the same.
So we had the trails guy come in and bid that and did that over at Tolemore. She they communicated with like, okay, because if we got his opinion is what I guess I'm saying.
We have not. We've just solely been using the standards that were approved in a meeting in February-ish, March-ish. It, it, the, the actual substandard of the material isn't specified.
So there were new, new standards approved, other than what's in the green. Derek said he brought forward that sheet that talked about all the standards after Tolemore so that we could be clear on what, what we want.
And it didn't include a subs, uh.
He talked about rubbing up the, the, the bottom layer to make sure it was clear of anything.
Okay.
Thatching it down and then putting recycled concrete on top.
Yeah, and that tends to kind of coagulate or whatever and become almost like concrete is what my understanding is.
Yes. They, Toll Brothers feels like the Crush and Run is really better than what we were suggesting and they would do either, but they thought the Crush and Run would look better.
They would do either though. So.
We can contact our.
The trails guy, yes. And just if he knows that, if the trails guy that did Tolemore, and if he, if we can explain the difference to him and if he can say, yeah, you know what? That's even better or that's the same or he has no opinion. Then I'm, I'm just concerned that yeah, they're saying they're going to do it, but then they do it and it's again, not what we expected.
Okay. So you will do that. And Derek, Derek did look at it. He thought it was fine. We asked the A, A M T engineer what he thought about the difference. He thought it was fine.
Okay.
So we'll make sure.
I'd ask the trail guy.
Got it.
Yeah.
We'll just, so the consensus is we just go with the recommendation of what our trail guys is on the substandard of the material.
Yeah, and if Toll Brothers is willing to do either one, then I'll see what the trail guy says.
Either way, my opinion is not going to make a huge difference, but we'll, we'll go with them and figure out what, what the best option is and we'll just communicate that to Toll Brothers.
I'm just going to save you the record. It's hard for me to come to consent if you're looking for consent because I don't know what any of that means. So just for the record, I, I don't, I don't know about any new standards. So I'm not really sure.
And we'll email those to you so you have them. And I'll just go and email them to, to y'all so you're aware. Uh, we didn't actually realize that that was, I didn't realize it was actually in a standard that was approved in the minutes. We probably should have done it in an ordinance or a provision to the master plan, but, um, we've got them now. We've got our hands on them. We're going to put it in the agreement as an exhibit so we can go back and look at it if we need to at a later date. But I'll send you those so you'll have them.
Okay. Thank you. And you have tree lighting for, uh?
I do. So as you all know, we're working on, I think it's a fifth year tree lighting event. Um, it's something we do annually and we're trying to kind of make it a little bit more fancier this year. Um, so we're looking for some sponsors and just want to make sure y'all are okay with us soliciting sponsors for the event. Uh, passed out a, just kind of a solicitation letter that we'll be sending out. If council is okay, well, that's doing that. Um, if you see any changes that are suggested or needed on that letter, let us know. But basically we're trying to raise another $4,000 for the event. Um, we're just going to add some potentially ice sculptures in there. We're going to have a live little snow garden area. Um, we're going to have a smores pit. Hopefully the Boy Scouts will manage that. Couple of other things. Same stuff that we usually do. We're just adding a few features. So.
Light trails, snow machines.
Oh yes, the light trail. I wanted to mention that real quick. We're, we're trying to solicit some volunteers to do a twilight trail this year. We're going to put it, if you're facing the barn, it'll be to the left in that little open field. Um, and just have some kind of sculptures that are people do with lights. So it illuminates and we'll do like a, a judging the night of and so people can kind of meander through and look at different light shows. So we're going to try it, see what happens. We're going to look for community volunteers. There's no fee or anything to do, but we just want people to come in and put up a light fixture.
Now I got a call a couple of years ago of an individual who did up his lights so much that created congestion in the roads, but happened to be not part of Marvin. But I know there is a person who does that and gets a lot of traffic through the neighborhood and that's in, right here in the Preserve. Um, and his is a crazy elaborate thing that it's literally, you pull up and you watch it and you turn on the radio station. So it's, but the, the question was, is there a way to do, I know Seabrook Island or Saint John's Island down in South Carolina, they have a huge event, but it's a huge park and there's, there's sponsors that do lighting and you just kind of drive in and drive right back out to check all the Christmas lighting. And I thought, boy, it'd be great to do something, you know, small like that where you could drive into the park in the evenings and just come right back out and, you know, and.
Well, our problem there now is electricity because we're going to have to actually pull in a generator to do this. That's why we're, we've actually got a, a rules of entry for people that want to do it. We're really heavily trying to influence them to do solar.
I was going to say, because that's going to be a lot of noise if we have
Yeah.
A generator running and, and, and people trying, and speaking of electricity, um, and I don't know what we're going to do. Someone, we ordered like ten Keurigs for the hot cocoa and it was continually shorting out. There wasn't enough power at the barn to keep the Keurigs going. So if we, a sponsor that just would sponsor hot chocolate and bring it in in a huge vats would be much easier to.
We're actually going to.
Beyond that, I think it really needs to be updated. This is what I guess, you know, we were running into. We had, um, you know, put these plans forward and were told that the, um, you know, that the electricity at the barn had been upgraded. To me, if, if you're talking about Christmas events and lots of lighting kind of goes with that hand in hand, um, plus music equipment. I think if, if I was going to, um, ask this council to ask you to look into anything, it would be what is the electrical capacity? What's reasonably, what's necessary for the kind of event we're talking about? And what are the upgrade options and costs honestly? Because at this point, I agree with you. I think it's probably one of the better events that we will host and it's got the potential to do some really amazing things. But at this point, to continuously run into, um, an electrical issue, it was, um, it was a lot less fancy last, than it was last year. That was the first time it was sort of pushed the boundary, which I love, but it sounds like some of the things we're talking, you're talking about doing, which are amazing, will lead us to the same issues. We had even a few years back, just lighting some of the trees, um, and using the feed that was up by the gate was shorting out all kinds of equipment. So I don't, I haven't been involved in a while, so I don't know what that capacity is.
We may have to have Derek visit what capacity we have and just because right, I think we also moved the tree inside for the first time. It was a big tree and I think that was a, a real tree, if I'm not mistaken, given the size of it and stuff. And that takes a lot of lights and then everything else goes on. But the ice sculptures, all that kind of stuff, not really taking much electricity. But if we start getting into, and, and that could be, because we're probably too late for it anyways, to do some lighting events. But having a generator running, I think it's just background noise with if there's playing music and stuff that we're probably not ready for. So I'd rather not pursue that thing and, and, and that's just the opinion of one and the council can decide that. But if it's non-electrical related that we can do, that creates an ambiance that invites more people in, I'm, I'm all for it. The, the hot chocolate thing was a big thing because there were still long lines and I know, and I talked to the high school, what they do is they just get hot water and put it in the huge five gallon big drums and they're just pouring as fast as they can make it. And, and that was pulling a drain on, you know, the, the numerous Keurig contained in things that we have.
Years past, we had bands as well. They had bands for music. Whereas, um, in the past year, they had, there was a weather, uh, issue at the last minute. So a DJ come in to put up, um, music equipment. So that also sucked. There were a lot of things stuck in there. I mean, just so you know.
So a couple of points is we had planned on ordering a few urns, like big urns to put the hot chocolate in. So we don't have to worry about it. It can be kind of self-service. We don't have to have any electricity board or anyone fully manning that.
Yep.
Um, so, so that's one thing. We can take out the twilight, you know, issue for this year. Um, if that's what council chooses to do, it's not a big deal for us. It's just one of the things that we wanted to add in there. Um.
So are we asking her to look into the electrical capacity there and find out what is, what it's at?
I think Derek can easily determine what, you know, what the capability is and if you have, we have to add more for, if, let's figure out what we're going to do first if we really require it. It sounds like just right now, what we're doing with the trees.
I know things are part of administration, as an electrician.
No, no, no. I'm not saying he's an electrician, but you know, if it's, if it's something that we can, you can tell if there's space for more. It just didn't, I can go look at a panel myself and determine if we can add more, um, voltage into that place or not. I mean, that's, that's pretty easy to determine.
But that's what we've been doing year over year over year, right? And so the two options were really downplay it and make sure nothing ran on electricity, like having bands and singers and, you know, that. Right, the coolers or doing things like you're talking about that would draw, um, electricity, which I think is worth looking at. And that you need an electrician for. I mean, I don't think there's any.
I think, I think I'd want to, I'd want to have an electrician, you know, see what, what our capacity is and what we think we want, want to use or in the future. And, you know, find out what, when, how we could upgrade the electricity and what it would cost.
Because that could even help for other events, like if there's a small wedding or whatever.
Yeah, never forget to talk about capital improvement plans with parks integration or parks, uh, Greenways. That's, you know, if it's a, a major undertaking, it's something we should add into our capital improvement plan. So if y'all are okay with me hiring an electrician to come out and look at it, um, to see what's needed to at least obtain estimates for getting it redone in the future.
I guess you would give them an idea of what you, what we might be planning so they know what we should do.
Exactly. That, that would be my, my, my thought.
I'm, I'm going high end of what we're planning, sort of.
There's room to move.
We can, I mean, we have the contingency, you know, money that's in our budget. I can pull from it and just report to you at, you know, at a later meeting what, what I've paid unless y'all want me to come back to you as a separate item to talk about this in, in a future meeting.
I mean, it's, I think it needs to be upgraded.
Okay. So if, um, I guess two-fold, I'll go ahead and do that, but if we're okay with meeting the current capacity of doing something of what we anticipate for the, the twilight stroll, are y'all okay with that?
I'm all for this if, if we have to take a vote on it and stuff as far as raising consensus. Yep.
So if anybody listening wants to donate.
I'll just make a motion for clarity. Do you want me to, oh, on this? We're on the upgrade with the electrician. Okay. Um, so, uh, make a motion to have the administrator, um, uh, contract with a electrician to review the capacity, electrical capacity at the park, um, against the needs and future needs that we may require for events. And, um, have her get that estimate and bring it back to us.
So are we contracting? You said contract. Are we just asking for a bid like we would somewhere over there saying, okay, hey, we, what does our capacity give us that? So I don't think we're contracting.
I get a couple of. Yeah, I mean, excuse me, I would just thank the, just calling out an electrician, charge us a couple hundred bucks to come out and look at what our current capacity is and let us know what it's going to be. And then estimate what they think a future need would be if, if that's what.
Yeah. So I'll amend it to just proceeding an estimate with all those same parameters and then bringing it back to the council for review. Is that?
Go ahead, go ahead and hiring someone to look at it.
Yes.
They're going to charge us a few hundred bucks to figure out what our capacity is.
I'm fine with that as long as everyone else is. Um, but that's a motion on the table. So.
If we can, yes.
Well, okay. Further discussion? All's in favor?
All right. Just if we can get that done quick and then next meeting, we can throw it on it. And then if there's more things to be done, then you can continue planning the event instead of trying to wait.
Yep, okay.
I don't.
Go ahead. I was just wondering, anything else that, I did have a question for you. Anything you hear on Publix?
I've not.
Okay. Um, again, full disclosure, I got a call from Vanessa and they were here at the meeting when DOT was presenting the, what do they call them? Super streets.
Were you talking about Publix?
Yes.
Or on that?
Well, it's administrators. I just wanted to know if there's been any talk or, you know, because they're supposed to, they've been saying they were going to start the project. It sounded like when they were here, they were talking about things are around, right around the corner. I just was wanting to know.
I think the last update that I had received was they were supposed to submit in October-ish to planning board.
Okay.
And then hopefully we'll come before cancel in November.
Okay. So for purposes of council and stuff, Vanessa reached out because they were here when DOT presented and I think I made the comment, we're looking at a choice between a, a super street and a super street. We really don't have a str- a choice here. Um, but she had reached out to me and they are working with their engineer from Kimley Horn, who is well respected with DOT. And I would like to suggest is we go forward or look into the October meeting if we can, because I, she gave me his name. I reached out to him just to see if I could, uh, you know, possibly invite him here to, because DOT is going to tell us what they're going to tell us. Um, my understanding in talking to other communities that they're not necessarily all on board with this super street concept, but it's, you know, as we listen to DOT and then obviously if Publix starts their process, we need to do everything we can to make that corner successful. And if it's, that super street is going to somehow affect that, then, you know, we need, we need to know that. This is our first commercial and if, you know, and I'd just like to hear his point of view, not necessarily saying so. If there's a way we can, if the council is okay with it, if there's a way we can invite this, I'll get you his contact information. Um, but he is from Kimley Horn. He represents Publix and they've been talking a lot with DOT in the past about what that whole corner looks like and what the in and out process is and stuff. So it would be good to have, I think, him so we can get, because I, I know very little about super streets. That's just me. I don't know if anyone's an expert on it, but super streets are, my understanding are good for certain areas and not necessarily work in all, all we have.
I don't see a problem having to come in and again, unfortunately DOT is going to do what DOT wants to do. And we, maybe, you know, if we have enough communities giving, you know, giving them some feedback, we might be able to get some concessions out.
But that's, that's my point. I don't even know if it's concessions because it's like they're going to, we're, we're ponying it up for some roadways along, or the, the pathways alongside of it. I know Weddington's doing very little and my last CRTPO meeting or two meetings ago, that was at that she was, but the mayor was all in favor of this. But they don't have any, necessarily any commercial properties along that and it may or may not affect them. But for everything, as it goes all the way down into Waxaw, how does it affect Waxaw community to your point? Westy and his chapel's not involved, but then you got all the other, um, locations that are dealing with the same thing. Uh, but to your point, Nick, I think that's good. I mean, we, we meet with them and find out there's power in numbers, if you will. Um, but I, I just like to get a, my head around what we're looking at and how, how does Publix look at it?
I don't have a problem with that. No problem hearing what you're going to say.
Um, sorry, I'm just having a, just a bit of a point of order on it because I think these are all worthwhile discussions, but I feel like when we meet her off, we need to add an item to the agenda for discussion.
Well, it's a administrator's report. That's why.
No, no, hold up. It's, 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 it's really not. I mean, we've heard a lot of opinions, right? Um, one, Publix wasn't on her report and, and then, you know, it was sort of brought up and she gave us an update, but now we're talking about super streets. And then now we're talking about having a private company come in to provide us with an update on super streets. And, and so I'm, I'm not saying I'm opposed or against all that, but we've just gone from administrator's report that had nothing on it about Publix to Publix, super streets, you know, and now having a presentation.
We're, yeah.
And, and so to me, this is just, I'm only one person, but I'll just tell you that if we're all talking about transparency and making sure that the public can see what we're talking about, this is the sort of thing and there's no, it's not, there's nothing to it. You just say, hey, you know what? Hey guys, y'all, I'd like to talk about super streets today. Can we add that to the agenda? At least when the agenda is revised and people are looking for an update, they're going to see that in the minutes and they're going to see the title. Otherwise, under administrator's report, nobody wouldn't even know that this was discussed. And so I just, I feel like, you know, we could refine some of the meeting processes and protocols a little to be sure that people are informed and they know what it is we're discussing. That's all. I just have to say, I, I just have to mention.
That, that's fine. I, I just, I know Christina, you and I talked about what are truly work sessions about. And work sessions should be about discussing what we talk about at the regular meetings and to pick up because we're really not even supposed to be deciding on anything in these work session. And this is classified as a work session meeting. So we're really not supposed to take votes and stuff. So, um, a simple question as I look through her and then I'm reminded that this was, um, a while back that I was approached. All I was asking is to consider, um, more of a direction to see if we are okay with hearing from the side or a, another expert. And that's all it was. It didn't need to go into it. And it's just, what I'm doing is trying to get it, get an okay or consensus that we added to the agenda in October, if there's room for it, and he's available to come to us to talk about their side, if you will, and stuff. And that's all the intent was. So it wasn't meant, and it was part of the administrator. So.
Yeah, I have no trouble with that. I agree on many points. Work session, we should all just say, hey, guys, can I throw this on? It's just about, it's just as simple to throw it on as an item. That, that's, to me, I have no problem saying, sure, why not add it? Um, but since now we're, we're, I'm talking about the super street. But since now we're, we're, I'm talking about the super streets, I'll just say again for the record, that I don't, it feels premature to me, if we want to have someone to talk to us about the super street options, then I think the village should look for someone to come and present to us. I don't think that we should be going to a developer who's got an application with the village, and then saying, by the way, can you come to the village and give us your opinion on super streets? That to me seems like a couple of, which is.
I agree, I agree with you to a point, but, you know, it's the developers, you know, that we've approved their thing, and we want, and I think we'd wanna hear from their person saying what he thinks it would affect, would have on their development, you know? We've already approved that development, so it's something that, you know, it's not like.
And it's someone we've used before, Kimley Horn.
Much, that, that to me is a different issue, right, than saying, we want, as part of their development application, I agree with you, that night I was very interested in hearing from, from them, but that's a very different thing than them coming up here and saying, this is how we feel about super streets. Their impact on their development is one perspective, and then having them come and give us an opinion on super streets and what they think of, we already know what their opinion's gonna be, quite frankly, we heard it that night, so we're, we're.
No, we didn't.
I did, I.
I did, you mean, they, they had a chance to talk about, Publix had a chance to talk about super streets?
To, to.
They did not have an engineer.
To an extent, they did.
They did not have an engineer, Kimley Horn was out.
I said their opinion, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, I mean, they, they don't want, they're not crazy about super streets.
Thank you, yes, we, we know, yeah, there's, you know, I understand what I'm saying, it's just that there's one thing to get a perspective from them and how it would impact, definitely wanna hear about that. But how they generally feel about super streets without just, and it's just one person, if you wanna have three people come and present, and then you get around, get an opinion, that's one thing, but to get one person's perspective, the same people who are working for the development that happens to have an application here, it just seems a little skewed.
I mean, like I said, my point is, was that, you know, it's, it's directly affecting their development, and really, that's the only thing in Marvin that it would affect, I mean, the super street, that's the only.
And what inches chase them.
Well, it's kind of that, you know, that area right there, there's no, there's not anything else in Marvin that we have to worry about where, you know, with super streets. So I think, you know, I have no problem hearing what they impact they feel alive on their thing and stuff, and again, DOT is gonna do what DOT wants to do, so we, you know, we can listen and we can suggest, say something to DOT, but we have very little, you know.
Say, yeah, I think we should wait until Publix comes to planning board, planning board comes to us, let's see what the plans are, then we can make a decision who we need to bring in, listen to, cause right now we're just, you know, taking a stab in the dark, so let's, let's get the information first.
The only problem with that is DOT is moving forward with their, their plans, and other towns are either in favor, and I just wanna get more information about what, what are the pros and cons of, and we've heard the pros and cons, more pros from DOT, we've not heard from another independent, and if they're affiliated with a developer, to me it doesn't matter, and still I can decipher, understand that they're gonna be in favor, but, you know, I, I just wanna get another side of the story, keeping in mind that, you know, we have to continue to work with DOT, so we're just, all I'm doing is gathering information, and I, I think, you know, just is, is what, what are the negatives, cause there certainly wasn't much negatives that DOT was presenting, in my view.
Then I think we need to get an, like, an independent that has nothing to do with the development, cause they're gonna be skewed one way.
Would y'all like for me to ask AMT to come in and do a presentation?
That is probably the first question.
If they know about the, if they know some of the.
You need somebody that's not, that doesn't have a dog in the fight. Is that, is that, I guess what I'm hearing from everyone is AMT?
Yeah, I'd just like to hear another side of, you know, other side of things, so that's all I was bringing that up for, okay.
If they come in in October, then great, and if not, just, just get them in as soon as they can.
All right. Okay, all good? Thank you. Next up, we have planning board update. Chairman John is not here, so we'll have to table that to the next October meeting, if it's okay with council. Next up, I have PRG board update.
And Mary is, asked me to do this today, she wasn't able to come. Only thing I really wanted to make sure is everyone was okay with the October 2nd joint session.
I'm gonna check my email.
At nine?
And that's in the morning.
So we need to put out a special meeting?
We will.
For that?
We'll put a notice out today.
I don't have that, what time is that?
It's around 9:00 AM. And we are proposing, you go ahead and just say we're gonna have it next door, because we don't have enough table space for, for everybody.
But we'll need to make that change, so you'll need to make that motion for it.
Like to.
For location change, because we have to notify the public with at least seven days if we're doing a location change.
Where are we meeting?
Seven days.
Uh, next door.
Oh, okay.
We don't have seven days.
There's another meeting, it's just the R G, right? So we can update the regular me, the adopted sched, regular adopted schedule, or call for a special meeting, either way, I don't, doesn't matter to me which way.
Nick, you can make that.
We can do a special meeting in one place and do a loc- location change.
And that's at 9:00 AM?
Nick can't be there.
Okay.
Do you wanna try to accommodate a different date or time, Nick?
Or do you wanna just call in on the phone?
I mean, I'm fine, you know, it's just a, you're.
We can update you afterwards.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that, yeah, I'm fine with it, I just wanna make sure that everyone else is fine.
I'm good with the second at 9:00 AM. I don't have any, you good?
I mean, it's just a, it's just gonna be a ERG meeting.
It's all PRG related, so, if it's a special meeting, then that's all we can talk about.
It's actually their regular meeting.
But it'll be a special meeting for us.
PRG, but it'll be a special meeting.
Yeah, we're just sitting in, I'm listening, and maybe.
Just so you know, only cause I know your concerns, I just wanna be upfront with you, that still means that there would be a quorum of this board and a special meeting.
Right.
Right.
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll put a notice, it'll ma, we'll make it a special meeting, but.
And Nick can't be here, realize that.
No, I know that, it's just, but, but all we can do is talk about PRG issues and stuff.
Can you just make sure Robert's aware of it?
Yeah, I'll give him a call today.
Okay. All right, um, anything else from, just, okay?
Unless there's anything y'all wanna see on the agenda that wasn't in that original kind of template that they have provided in their agenda.
Cause I think it'd be just their agendas, that what I'm understanding.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so next up.
But hold on a minute, Barbie, we're gonna have to come here first since it's not seven days, and then move ahead.
No, we can change it within the 48-hour notice, we have that latitude to do that, but we just need to, yeah, if it's a special meeting, we can do that.
Okay.
So what I'll do is I will generate the notice and notify Robert of the meeting, and then we'll, we'll put, post that out on the website, we'll also send it out through MailChimp, and we'll put it on the bulletin board, and it's be at, at the fellowship call.
Okay. Next up, we have adoption consent agenda, and then we removed two items, but with consideration that, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items. As amended, all's in favor? Motion passes. Next up is consider approval of changes to rules of procedure. Christina, you had that, I know you presented, I think the change was on using electronic devices and stuff, and anyone having any issues with that, or?
The public comment piece.
What?
There was two things on there. I know there was a change in the public comment period.
And, uh, debate.
Yeah, cancel, should not engage in debate or commentary during the public comment section, and then, basically no use of, village cell phone or computers with texting applications.
Eight, nine, I feel.
I'm just looking for.
During, during debate, so.
I'll just save it for the record, the first one is by, I'm kinda stuck here a little bit because I had.
The public comments.
Yeah, the public comments, fine. The second one, I know that Robert and I had talked about things that he was going to want to bring up, but he's not here, and I didn't know who was gonna be here, so I don't know, honestly, I just didn't get that far, so I don't really know what to say about that portion.
Second one being?
The text, the text debate, I think. The, yes, that text, the text one is the second amendment, yeah.
And I'll just make this note real fast, as a deep ratio, I think you had kind of brought up some things on the agenda, Robert asked me to put some commentaries on the next meeting for agenda setting purposes, and I think at some point we need to have a discussion about work sessions versus regular sessions, so i- if y'all want to tangle this discussion to encompass all that in one fell swoop, if we're gonna make some other changes to it, as far as maybe kind of highlighting exactly what we're gonna do in work sessions, and we had some suggestions on minute approvals as well, so.
We'll write this right after.
We can talk about that in October, if that's something y'all wanna do, if you wanna move forward and approve this now, or.
I think we can table it.
Can you table if?
I think we need to get some stuff approved and move on, and if we need to change some other stuff, then we'll add it later, but, I mean, this has been on here for I don't know how long.
So I'm just gonna ask if we can, again, again, separate the two, separate the motions so we can pass the first, first paragraph and then the second, that, that would be my only request.
So the second paragraph is, is relating to what again?
Uh, the public comments, yeah.
Okay, so you, you want to discuss that, is what you're saying?
No, no, I'm fine with that.
You're fine with that?
It's the second one that I said I would listen to Robert's input for the second portion, I didn't really know what that input was gonna be, maybe we thought we'll just talk about it, and he's not here, so I don't, personally, don't feel.
Right, and just for the record, cause I, in, in hearing, I, she called for a quorum yesterday, we all responded, Robert did not respond for the record?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have no idea where he is, he just didn't show up for the meeting, okay. And, you know, to Kim's point, we wanna get some things done and stuff, so if we want to look at it again, we can always bring it up for, to be discussed again, but this, to her point, was, was, was out there for some time and it was discussed, so I'll leave it to council to determine what, what we wanna do going forward.
I mean, we can separate and we'll vote on each other, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So I need a motion then to vote on the.
We'll do a vote on the change under rule 15, the public comment period, as changed by staff, do you want me to read it?
Okay.
Has presented.
Has presented. In the agenda?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's not actually in red, I don't, we didn't, but it's, you know, my unfortunate, it's not very out.
So I'll need a motion to change our, rule number 15 or our rules and procedures, as stated, to approve that.
Show me.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, and then the next rules and procedures would be on the debate. Need a motion to pass the changes in rule number 25 in regards to debating with public when they, after their public comments.
No, I'm sorry.
No.
Isn't that what that is?
This is not to use text or messaging applications.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It is text. That's why I'm confused, sorry.
We're at rule 25, right?
Rule 25.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm reading it, I'm reading, I'm making up stuff now, okay, so regarding the text utilizing of texts and electronic devices.
Right, that's right.
Okay, sorry.
It's in the debate section, cause it was for debates.
Yeah, so my fault is, cause I saw a debate and that's what I went to. So make motion to, make those rule changes as stated, further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
So we're, we were basically only talking about Dean.
Yes.
I mean.
That's the change.
That's, that's what's added.
And then you said Robert had.
Yeah, he had questions and, and we just, I think, we talked like in these spurts, and so we didn't get a chance, I didn't get a chance to hear exactly what they were, but we said, oh, no, let's talk about it in the meeting, who wants to pull it off and talk about it, and that was all I knew, so I, I just, sorry, I wish I could help more.
We have any knowledge of what Robert's done, I mean, I personally would like to, you know, I know it's not always done that way, it was done to me, but I mean, certainly, I always like to have, yeah, a full council, they're thinking of what you, they're thinking of the rules, you know?
We can table to the October meeting if he has something that he wants to specifically discuss.
You know, again, I, I don't like, I, you know, I don't like it what it was done to me, I don't like it what, what it's done, but I mean, I think that, you know, I, I like to have a full council and do anything with their rule change.
Okay.
At least, at least hear everybody's point, you know?
So have a nay vote then for you?
Yeah.
Okay, Mary?
Yes.
Nay vote, okay, so the motion doesn't pass, we'll, if we can move that to October meeting for discussion on that. And next up, unfinished business, be consider approval of December 12th, 13th, 2017 minutes, any changes? I read through them after we finally received them, and I assume that we went through the whole recordings, and I, I didn't see anything, and I'll just make a motion to pass the December 12th and 13th meetings of 2017, hopefully we can get this in before a year is up.
Where did we get the recording?
Um.
Mike Scoop.
Oh, you had it, it was provided.
Yeah, it had part of it.
Okay, okay, the rest of it, or whatever, we didn't have, okay.
So the only part that was missing was the, NCGOT presentation, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other changes or anything that anyone has on that?
So we got a motion on the table to, to pass?
Yeah, let's see what I had, yeah, the only thing is I, I made a highlight of it, on December 12th, we talked about work session meetings, moving them to Thursday at 9:00 AM, that was more, you know, and the only reason I highlight that is cause that was all agreed upon, cause there was some discussion and concern about the community, us changing our meetings to, to not allow people to attend, or because, and we could argue that, and I think that's what the gentleman was here earlier about, he was worried about that we were gonna do something on that, we said we moved that to a main meeting, but I guess we can argue it either way, if parents can't get there, cause if you move it to Thursday 9:00 AM, school's in session, actually you can get a lot more probably adults here than thing, but then if you had it in the evenings like we've had in the past, that, you can use the argument that parents have to take their kids somewhere to some event and stuff, so I'm glad we did change it at the beginning, and I also like to point out the motion that was made in setting May 31st, 2018, as the date for adoption of the 2018-19 budget that we were prepared to do, and then because of councilman's actions, that was never done, and then we got into this whole mess where we had to shut down our town, but that was set for that date, there was no reason that that should have not been approved, since we had worked on it from that date, we had worked on it back, but that's back in December 18, we talked about it, we worked on it to have it completed, we were prepared to do it, and the, the council took advantage of the two to one vote to not approve the meeting, and then that set a lot of other things, but I just wanna make that for the record, but other than that, I didn't see anything else I wanted to change or anything else, or anybody else?
I think.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the December 12th and 13th, 2017 minutes, further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye. Actually, I'm sorry, I just noticed, I just realized something, this is the meeting where there was a suspension of the rules, but there was not two-thirds vote, I just wanted to highlight that, so if, I know there's a prevailing argument that a two-thirds vote is required to suspend the rules, and that is what the rule book says, but if that were something that this council continuously adhered to, I would still be employed, and I don't have any extra paychecks, I'm pretty sure, in my bank account, and in addition, we would not have the three members sitting on the planning board that we do now, because if you do a calculation on that night, two-thirds did not vote in favor of that motion to suspend, just wanted to be sure that that was made clear.
Right, and a lot of the suspensions of, in the preceding council members have done done that on a regular basis and what we did after, because it wasn't on the rules, but in January, I think we talked about transparency and making sure everything is on agendas and we agreed to that and uh.
No, no, that's not what I'm talking about.
No, I I I know, I know we're talking about the rule, but that's that's kinda how it's been done and it's been accepted and and stuff, we've added things, cause I know that was a contention point that we we it wasn't on the agenda. But going forward, if you look at once the new council took place and as of January, we have clearly stated that and I have adhered to that since that time, that that's.
This is a separate discussion, sorry, missed point of order, I don't, I think that's a separate discussion from what I'm saying, I'm just mentioning that for the record, I'm kind of with the minutes.
Right, right.
So did we approve them?
Yes, okay, so you made your point, okay. So we'll make a motion to approve and consider the December twelfth.
No, should we, well, I'm sorry, was it, the motion was to approve them as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so can I just, we're in discussion, should that be amended in any way? I don't know the answer to that, honestly, just occurred to me and now as I'm scrolling through them.
I don't think it's amended, cause that's.
That's what happened.
That's what happened.
That's what actually, that's the action that was.
We probably don't write it out, that's something else.
Okay, I just, it literally jumped out at me and I just thought, oh, okay.
All right, halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Um next up, we have a discussion consideration of village website proposals.
Okay.
And I'll just make a note here, we're not asking for selection of any of these vendors right now, we're just merely asking if y'all want us to continue to move forward and looking at these proposals in depth and coming back at a later date with with some options, cause we haven't spent a whole lot of time looking at the variations of the different ones.
And my question on this in my notes was, can we see examples, um can you maybe send us the three separate companies that are bidding on this and examples of towns that are using them where I can go on, just Joe Blow and just see how I can navigate?
Well, that's, that's the basis of this discussion, because what we want you, what what we're looking for is for for you all to give us the next steps or authorize us to go in depth and do the pros and cons um in each one of these proposals so that you um ask us what you want us to look at and what you want us to provide and that would be one of those um examples of of different websites that these vendors, each vendor has has done.
Point of order, I'm just gonna propose something, cause I know that you started with a questions, right, personally, I feel much more comfortable if we start with staff telling the report, cause then I feel like we're doubling back, so is this okay, I'd like to kinda hear your general presentation, if that's okay, Barbie, how you were gonna present this to us and what your thoughts were, do you understand what I mean? Would you give me the overview first, so?
If you don't mind if I interject real quick, um basically, this this was not a budgeted expense and honestly, I was taken back a little bit by the cost, I thought it was gonna be about five thousand dollars, to be completely honest, and these reports came back at anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand-ish. So I really, first and foremost, before staff spent a whole lot of time reviewing the packets that are literally this did, we wanted to make sure y'all are okay with us pulling it from contingency or doing a budget amendment later to.
We didn't put this in the budget?
Website design was not in the budget.
Yeah, that's right. We talked about it during the budget session and I swear Chris added it, cause we, I mean.
Yeah, I think we did too.
I remember talking about it.
Or we, I don't know if we added enough, but we did talk about.
And she was.
And you may have to make an amendment to add to it because we were way me maybe way low on our.
I mean, I know we talked about it.
If you give me a second look, it might take me a minute to, I don't think it's in there, I could be wrong. Um but I I guess what I'm saying is we, staff is not prepared to really give any kind of reports because we didn't, we haven't spent a whole lot of time looking at RFPs.
Well, just these three, like an overview of what, why you chose these three and the twenty, leaning towards just general.
Yes, yes, and that was the whole basis of of the discussion is because each one of these has got a thick packet, um as you saw the very first, most of them had several pages, so what I did was is I just pulled out their cost sheets and then on the others just gave you the the points of what they did and showed you a comparison of the three, but what we were wanting to find out is if you all were in favor of doing this, then we would go into a deep dive into each one of the vendors and um give you examples of who's used them before and websites and give you um pictures, maybe even throw them up on the TV to show you which ones are are they have done and to to give you a a better sense of um options, you know, cause this is a lot of money and we are gonna have to pay for a lot of money, but what I do remember from the discussion at the budget is that we we brought this as a proposal, as a preliminary to add to the budget, now I don't know whether or not we got uh approval to do that and how much council did that, we'd have to go back and ask Chris.
So I got it actually, if you mind if I interject here, so um we budgeted five thousand dollars for website redesign, so we'd have to pull the other five or other ten depending on what vendor we chose, so the next steps from my opinion should be, we need to establish a criteria for reviewing these RFPs and we can do that by coming up with some type of matrix, bring it back to you to see if you're okay with that criteria, if we're gonna move forward and if there's any other things we wanna add.
So it's five thousand just for redesign, we already pay, we're, I I would imagine it's in the budget, but the monthly maintenance costs, right, when it's ninety, ninety-five dollars.
Ninety-five or something like that.
For one, and then I don't know what our general outfit fees are, you change, you have to add a button, that kind of thing.
I think it depends on how many hours it takes for the for for the programmer to to do it, like for this next one, we had a rough estimate for possibly adding the RSVP button on there, well, that was gonna cost us a hundred and thirty-eight dollars for them to add the the button because it was gonna be like an hour and a half worth of programming hours for them to do that.
So I guess my, what I guess what I'm saying is that whatever those costs are now, those have been budgeted for, so that five thousand is just for redesign, right?
Yes, the the eleven hundred is what we budgeted for the annual fee and by the time we get done, we're gonna be halfway into the year, so six hundred bucks.
Okay, so and I will only just look at that in comparison to what we've looked at so far, I only see the two prices for two of them, let me know if I'm missing something.
Two were, two were around ten and then one was around fourteen, I believe.
Um there's one on the on the opposite side, um.
Granite Sky.
Granite Sky, um there's not a price for, but it's very similar to um, theirs is about ten thousand.
So ten hundred VC three.
Yeah.
So I guess my question was, is there given, I'm assuming you picked these three based on their uh working with municipalities that you've?
Right, one of them we already currently work with, which is VC three, that's our current host.
Right.
Um the other two are have um is a local vendor and another one is um out of New York.
Okay.
But they primarily work with municipalities, that's all they work with.
So just from a layman's term and I, you know, I'm not a great navigator of the thing, but I can get on our website obviously and see how that looks, but um uh is there a couple towns from these other companies that we're not, you know, cause we know what are, and maybe it even makes sense to use, give us other towns that are using the same company that we're using and see what ours could be potentially and then and to tag along that and I took it off the meeting is the um how does branding play into that and stuff, I know we had a person who was going to just talk to us in fifty thousand feet level, um can they help with that type of thing, is that, I know it's probably two separate things when it comes to contracting and stuff, but you know, listening and hearing someone talk about branding to the community, which we've all agreed that we should possibly be doing, how does that tie into this and can he steer us into um you know what we're looking at overall and stuff?
So that's kind of an, what I had mentioned to staff, maybe slight twist on the same idea, um I do have some um knowledge of how web design, development, coding, that kind of thing works and it would be more useful to me to have the staff go through other websites of other towns and find ones that you would think were usable, have the applications that you like, and when I say applications, I mean inside applications, um you know, you were talking about some of them are hooked up to, you know, the, in your case, the water, the public works or something, but those kinds of applications and look and feel, like creating a lot of different levels, I think personally for me, if I understood what the staff was aiming for, it would be easier for me to evaluate whether this is overkill. It it feels like overkill when I see the package, the current packages, um and it feels like we could get by with, and I don't wanna say the the word get by is not the right term, because it would be sufficient if not more than adequate to meet all your needs and and even then some, you know, make you dream up something else, um and give you flexibility to do that, but when I look at these and I see thirteen thousand dollars for the first year, for example, for a large city where you've got huge public records and lots of departments and they need super big backup, right, um because they'll also, I think VC three will do this too, they'll kind of consistently offer you huge backups of your site, all that sort of thing, we're kind of, it's built into these prices and I don't know that we need to upgrade, but may, I don't know if we need to upgrade to this level.
I mean, yeah, my my feeling, I mean, again, I'm not really good with this stuff, but you know, it it's a website thing and it's not a, you know, so I mean, I want something that staff can work with, you know, they need to find something that they can, you know, enter what they need to enter in it, but my main concern is that the public, when they access it, can access things and find things quickly and not have to go, where do I go for this, you know, I gotta fourteen different, you know, things and stuff, cause I think that discourages people then from, you know, I mean, I want something that's, I would want something that'd be very user friendly, I mean, you know, for the staff, I don't want them to be all burden trying to, because I want, you know, I'd like something that they they could work with, you know, easily get something, but I certainly would want something that is extremely user friendly for the public to, you know, go on a website and be able to just click on this and find out what they are instead of like this, then click this thing, click this thing, click that.
And they kind of go hand in hand, and correct me if I'm wrong, but having a little bit of experience with the program that you're currently working with, they kind of go hand in hand, because if as a staff member, you can eat, know that you can easily add something or put up an app or reconfigure a page, then um there's more stuff updated more often and therefore um the public can find what they're looking for more often, whereas if you're constantly struggling with the platform, um this one works on a block, on a block pa- platform and it's very difficult, I mean.
I'm saying, I know what I was right now, I gotta try and find something.
Wasn't one of the concerns too about um managing it, meaning someone there that is gonna constantly update it and and I don't know if we had the staff for it?
That would be staff and I, like I said, I would want something obviously that staff can do without going crazy, you know, be able to do it, but again, I know I go on our website now and I've, I have trouble finding things, I gotta click on two, three, four different things and I, you know, so I just want, certainly I want it to be, the main concern would be for it to be user friendly.
Easy, easy views, yeah.
If they can't use it, what's the use of that?
Quick, quick question and clarification if I would, the five thousand dollars, we already had a budget for, because I'm assuming we pay them already, the company we use, so the five thousand is in addition to improve it, not, that wasn't the whole budget for it, just that was improvements?
Correct, but the only, the 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 annual fee currently is eleven hundred dollars, so it's it's really not a whole lot.
Plus the ninety five that I was.
So the question is, what do we get for if we upgrade into these things, what, is there, is it really worth it or not?
And I think that's where she, I guess, council member Scoot's getting to the point of go look at examples, let me see what exactly is that we're looking for so you can sit, I mean, I don't have a lot of experience with website design and I don't, I don't have a lot of experience with how the interfaces work, so someone that has that experience internally, whether we get Mike or um someone to look at if this is too much.
Or what staff member are we going to put this on, is the question?
Barbie's currently maintaining the website, girl. Like I told council member Scoot yesterday, I don't, I don't think we would have any issues adapting to whatever format we chose, um but it is gonna be a learning curve, just keep that in mind and with current staff loads the way they are, it could potentially be problematic if there's a lot of extra work that's put up on staff, I'm just being realistic.
I went to the Almaral site that you mentioned, it's actually, I think, I'd encourage you to go look at it, cause it's a good suggestion and it's very easy to use, very clean and it has off the bat, a lot of the flexibility I think you're probably looking for, um where you can easily add your own page, correct me if I'm wrong, and but, and it might even be good if the staff had kind of made a list of the things they're having trouble with now, but even adding a new page or adding a subpage to, you know, to councilman Dispenstary's point, when the staff can do that and they hear feedback, well, wait a second, it'd be really great to have like Park have its own link, for the staff to be able to jump in and do that is, I think, I don't, what your guys are looking for, but right now, you have to call a VC three to do that every time you wanna do that and that seems to be very inconvenient.
And that's a charge each time we do that, that's a separate charge.
But I think that may be a good starting point if you were to check out that and see how how that works and then maybe learn a little bit more, because it, in the end, or initially I should say, it would probably be you and how is it, how is it gonna be for you time wise and?
Well, to have a new platform from what we have now, currently now, it would be a whole lot user friendly, because the platforms they're suggesting are Word-based.
Okay.
And it's it's very, it would be very adaptable for anybody to be able to to put anything up there.
Okay.
Um I mean, even even if we wanted to change the look of how you present the agendas and the minutes, you know, on a page and have it in a table form as opposed to the way it's presented now, uh we would have that ability to do that based on the the type of format, um platform that we would have at that point, so.
So if you wanted to make those changes, you wouldn't have to call them up?
I wouldn't have to call, exactly.
You could just do it.
Exactly, I could just do that.
So then we take that all apart charge off, okay, out of the budget, basically.
And we talked about this before, like a a whizzy wig uh program platform allows the staff to more or less manipulate a webpage and the website, almost like Publisher and Word, right?
Yeah.
So essentially, they're playing with graphics, they're playing with font, they're playing with, and as long as you've got a set look, y'all know what that look is, it's not too difficult for the staff to implement.
So is that this one?
Well, they both, all three of them have um that type of uh platform, one may be a little bit better than the other, um so uh Granicus is is.
I feel like that's kind of overkill.
They're a little overkill, um I I would have to admit, they are a little overkill, but there's there's several towns and municipalities that have them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that that use them quite a bit.
When I was in Almaral, we went to their website redesign, they use Granicus, it used to be called Vision, Granicus bought out Vision, but um if you go to the city of Almaral site, that's what they use and it's very user friendly, um it was a little bit of work on the on the front end because we had to actually let them know what content we wanted, let them know what pages we wanted, but it's really the, really easy to navigate on the back end.
Do you think we need something that big, I mean, Almaral's obviously a different?
Yeah, like I was, I was mentioning to her yesterday, is they have a lot of services and it was twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars in Almaral, so I was very taken back by being ten thousand dollars here with the level of services that we have here.
Thirteen-five. I'll be honest, after looking at it, great website, I think that we could, again, exactly we said, little bit of work on the up, on the beginning, but once you have it set up, this can be done for a fraction of the price and it would still be very much.
You would save money in the long run, I would think, even though it might be a little expensive and and a little little um, you know, at this point, but I think, I think once we get it to to the, to the platform that we want and the look that that you all want it to to look like, then I think we would save money in the long run.
And you're talking just in general, not with one of these specific companies, you're just saying in general?
In general, yeah, yeah.
Did, I'm just curious, did they happen to look at our, any of these, look at our website, see what we?
Granicus did, looked at our website, all, and um of course, VC three hosts it, so they see it all the time, um but I don't know if uh Granite Sky has looked at our website, I don't remember.
Since we use VC three now, can we not do some sort of conversion to an easier platform and not have as much upfront cost? I mean, since they basically have all the information already.
Well, they, it would be a total redesign because it would be a totally new platform because they don't even use the platform that we currently have right now, so it would be totally wiped out.
Okay.
So it's not, this price is not for a redo of the same thing they have?
No, no.
I mean, you're seeing that at a lot of companies now, anytime you join companies, even Word, if you go get Word, they want a reoccurring generating funding, so you know, now all these companies are going to, how can I get a reoccurring billing from that versus us just take it over and be able to do it internally and not have to rely on them for individual or ongoing maintenance, but that, I'm not surprised by these new things and the fact that we've kind of grandfathered into this, that's what we're, we have, but that to go and get what we have now is probably not even available.
Right, they they are supporting what we have now, um and they do what what they can with it.
Okay.
My concern is that it's only like four years old, right, I mean, this was, I remember when, just as I would, I guess, I think it was about four years, that they put this in in place, right, and so at four years, I'm kind of surprised that it's already, that they've changed the platform, it it kind of looks like a WordPress platform. It it kind of looks like a WordPress platform. So I don't know, more information, but.
I asked them the same question as to, yeah, I asked them that same question as to, why can't we just kind of merge?
Yeah.
And they said, well, we don't use that platform anymore. They use that Duprol platform now for everything that they do. So it's basically, they would still continue to host us and still make whatever updates we needed to make. But if we wanted something different, then we'd have to eventually switch over. And they they suggest changing them every five years anyway.
Updating it.
Yeah, yeah. And see, once we get this, then that, they won't have to do anything else other than maybe do a refresh, you know, what they call a skin change.
Because you guys can do it.
Yes.
Instead of having to call them and pay every time you make a little change. All right. I think, yeah, we definitely need more information.
So if I summarize this right, if you could, one, find websites that you like and tell me if you'd anyone disagrees.
That each company does.
That, well, that the staff finds is usable, then also you want to know, right, I think this is, another suggestion was to have websites that these companies already run, right, so that we can check those out. And then, did you want more information about VC three and the platform or any other questions about that?
So I think all three platforms are basically the same, right? Like it's basically Word.
Yeah, they may just be called a different, a different word, but they they both use the the WISI.
WISIWIG?
So you can, you guys can manipulate it?
Yes, yeah.
And then, oh, I see that with Granite Sky, they actually learned that out. And then just the cost, I know we said it was about ten thousand, just to be sure, but we know what the cost for Granite Sky is in terms of like monthly maintenance, the cost of the design?
I still have the full proposals, so I can send those out, back out to you all.
Okay.
Those are the three things I can think of.
Yeah, and if we can, you know, look at those, like maybe up on the big screen at this meeting.
And we pick out ones that's gonna use it pretty much.
Make sure you can use it, Nick.
You have to give the final.
Make sure the public.
Oh, the public. Well, and from that standpoint, if there's any other suggestions, whether it's the council members too, if they found sites that they find are usable, then you can explore it. The only thing we have left out of that is branding. We, you know, I, I don't even know how to approach that, but some of these, you know, I.
But now Granite Sky is one of them that does branding too. That's part of their service. They they do branding also in that, in theirs.
When you come back to us, can you kind of break that down for us, like, like, you know, Granicus doesn't do that, but Granite Sky will help you with branding and, yeah, kind of break that down. But I feel like if, even if we don't do the branding right away, if we can manipulate the websites easier, then when we change stuff, if we, if we want to, then we can at least, we, staff can change everything.
Well, the branding is a separate, is a separate cost. That's a totally separate, different type of project.
So they don't include branding in their proposal, but it's something that they?
No, but it is a service they provide.
Well, and that's sort of when, when you look at other places, you go, I like that design, try to imagine it with maybe the Marvin logo or colors. And that's exactly what you're saying, is that once you find a platform you like or a service you're comfortable with, those things can be easily updated and manipulated by the staff. So.
So I feel like website's the first step. And then, and I mean, we can start working on the branding too, but I don't feel like we need to do them at the same time.
Simultaneously, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Next up, I have unfinished D Treasury report. Mary, you had something to, you had some questions?
Yeah. These are general, most of them, because I'm new at this portion, so I really don't know exactly what they're doing. So I'll start with the first highlight is under three, six, oh, four reimbursable engineering fees. Did you see it? On page? My PDF, I can't go by my own, it's in the screen.
It's like the third page, I think.
The heading is three, six, oh, four reimbursable. I just wanted to be sure I understood, I probably guessed, but I want to be sure that those are costs that are going back to the developer. Is that right? And so I'm looking at these for like August, right, the Preserve, Talmore, Courtyards. I guess I was not sure what we're still doing that's going back to to them at this point. And I don't even need that question answered now, just thoughts that occurred to me when we were going through it.
It's great, really. It's like a flat revision?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, like courtyards, for example, didn't, like, I, I, I don't know, I haven't seen anything come forward. So I'm just more curious about what some of those costs are for. We can get that detailed information to you. It's, it looks like that sale's not very expanded, so I can get that information? Yeah, maybe there's a way to do that, I don't know. And again, this should be quick, because I just have a general questions about that. Oh. Don't, again, don't infer anything, but I'm going to three, seven, oh, six, late fee penalty, delinquent tax. What are those for?
The rates is that?
What was it, three, seven, oh, six, is that, is that?
That's for taxes, maybe? The people that were late paying taxes?
Is that their fees that they're giving to us?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Perfume, okay.
Just wanted to see that. All right, good. I just wanted to make sure I understand. And then four, zero, zero, three, is it? Vendor slash HOA event contributions? Actually, there's some.
Say again, what?
Four, I'm having trouble.
Four, zero, zero.
Four, zero, zero, three.
Vendor, HOA, then.
I think that's for maybe night out?
That's the National Night Out.
So those, again, a lot of this is clarification, that they are, those subdivisions donated?
Yeah, those were contributions for that event.
Okay. Wait, which one?
The one four, zero, zero, three.
Here?
So basically, the Hall of Farms, Firethorn, Bridle Path, Providence, and Marvin Creek, their HOAs donated those amounts.
Seven hundred dollars, okay. And then we moved those to a different fund, is that why they're?
I see that, is that an annual, I know way back, we used to have all the subdivisions participating in one thing. Now we moved to the park. So I'm more curious, do we ask for those donations?
Yeah, Ed does. He goes out and he's been, has relationships with all the HOAs and every year, I, I kind of personally give a friendly reminder to our community saying, hey, National Night Out, if you guys can, you know, find some. So it's all, it's all voluntary. I think it's, it's, it's worked out much better in this standpoint, because we certainly, as an individual community, would spend a lot more than that and is a lot of time and effort. And then you end up trying to pull fire chief, council people, whoever, and they're spread too thin. So having it at the park and and having a simple donation, I think maybe we can, we have what, seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, eight communities that, you know, some sort of letter ahead of time?
All of them.
Well, they didn't all participate, though. They certainly didn't all participate. This was, this was something that they just did and I think it's, the bigger neighborhoods have have, and it's just something that, something as small as fifty dollars is is appreciated, but anything to help kind of cut the cost down on what we spend there, so.
Well, I'm trying to make the distinction though between participating and giving money. Like NNO used to be that, like I said, all the subdivisions would participate. They would often like make hot dogs for their own subdivision and then you could, it was like a, you know, village-wide celebration in every subdivision. But then they consolidated.
Right.
I didn't know whether there were people.
Ed still gets the donations from, I think Kohl's participates with either staff members, they they donate their time and then Harris Teeter sometimes will offer hot dogs. And so Ed takes kind of care of all that, where we don't have a staff member. But then he also reaches out individually to the, each individual HOA and to see if they're willing to participate. So that's voluntary.
Very good. I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I, learn as I go. Highlighted website support, that was, is that one of those fees, sorry, under four, five, one, two? Office website, host email? I'm trying to kind of get a sense of the costs that I sort of want to make sure that.
Four, five, one, two, or O two?
You know, mine is really fuzzy. I think it's four, five, one, two?
Four, five, I don't have four, five, O two, one, two.
No, oh, no. But you know what, under five thousand professional services is just.
You mean four, eight, one, two?
Is that an eight?
Four, eight, one, two.
Yeah, yeah, it's four, eight, one, two.
Which question, which one?
Four, eight, one, two.
Four, eight, one, two?
A website support?
So I see the monthly hosting fees there, it's ninety-five. Is is that a VC three website support, a hundred and two? Is that an example of sort of what they charge for asking for update?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to be sure I understood that was for, okay. So this is what I.
That's like the à la carte menu.
Okay. And I think that was probably, all right, there was, there was one more. You might have to get back to me on this. Oh, where is it? Sorry. Again, this sort of all the way through, I guess, salaries and related expenditures. The, again, I have trouble reading it. It says reclass bonus paid for applicable employees for early shutdown. I don't have any information about what that is. What does that mean?
So in the very first meeting that we had, July eleventh, I want to say, we had basically calculated out how much lost wages were for those hourly people, mostly the parks people, some of our office staff here that are part-time, to not penalize them from the shutdown. So I'd asked for a one-time bonus that would have equated to what it was they would have normally gotten paid.
Okay.
So it was already budgeted there. We just didn't want to penalize them because it wasn't any fault of for their lost wages. So that's what that is.
So does that, the only question I think, I kind of wondered if that might have been Ed, that was just, the only question we leave out there, maybe you can look into. I wasn't sure how, I was remembering the Treasury letter from the state treasurer. And I honestly don't know how that works. They were saying, you know, certain contracts during certain parts of the shutdown, working, you know what I mean? So that, is that, is that something that works for the group or the fire?
So all of your contractual employees would have to be paid regardless, because they have a contract. Your hourly employees cannot be paid for hours that were worked, because we were supposed to be shut down. So instead of doing hourly wages, we did it as a bonus.
Okay.
So it wasn't actual wages, it was a bonus check to them, which equates, the dollar amount equates to the exact wages that would have been lost.
It just wasn't running through that period?
Yes, yeah.
And that was my other question. I just wasn't sure how that worked, kind of had that ringing in my ear and I wasn't sure. Okay.
That's why we did it as a bonus, so it wasn't against what the rules of the state would be.
The original, okay, got it. And that's it?
Okay.
That was all of them?
So is there something before we approve that you need to get clarification on or you're okay to prove it?
No, I'm fine to prove it. I just wanted to be sure I understood what each of those things were and that's it. Other questions?
Then I'll make a motion to consider adoption of the August two thousand eighteen Treasury report. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is.
Can we, can we take a restroom break?
Sure.
Sure.
Sorry. I feel like this is a good time.
You know, it's privately good that you remind.